I'd like to call to order the meeting of the King George County School Board. The vacation this evening will be done by Pastor Stephen Wang.
Let's all bow our heads. God, we just thank you so much for gathering all of us together. Thank you so much for blessing us with this school board. We acknowledge that you raised everyone up here to serve as school board members for such a time as this. You said that if anyone lacks wisdom, to ask of God freely, and you give to us freely. So we ask for wisdom tonight. I thank you so much for our great community, King George County, and all the administrators and faculty and teachers that serve our kids in all our schools. I pray that you will be present tonight, that all the needs of the students and the parents, as well as the teachers, will be heard tonight. Bless each school board member for their dedication to our schools and our students and our teachers. Let the decisions be made in civility and for the benefit of the students. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Wang. Now we have a treat. The national anthem will be sung by the Sealston Elementary School Chorus. Thank you very much for your wonderful singing. Thank you for bringing your students here. They did a great job. Does any of the board members like to say anything to the students?
Madam Chair, great job, guys. That was so wonderful. I'm, thank you, Ms. Schellenberger. I'm really excited for my daughter to join the chorus in 4th grade, right? It's 4th and 5th grade? Yeah. Great job.
I have a question. What's, again, being in the choir, what is the most, I always ask this, what's the most enjoyable part? Anybody? Wow, good. What'd you say, with friends? Somebody else?
I feel like chorus is enjoyable and you get to sing with your heart.
Very nice. What's the most difficult part?
I think you use all your breath a little.
Use all your breath? That's true.
To use all your muscles and try to sing it as perfect as you can.
Using all your muscles.
And to remember the song.
Ah, having to remember the songs, yes.
Trying to get all the high notes.
Get all the high notes. That's hard. And that's good. Thank you so much.
Doing other stuff, like going to everything.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard going to everything. It's a lot of stuff. That's good.
Thank you so much. Did a great job.
Thank you. Great job.
Now for the moment of silence. So the first item on our agenda tonight is recognition for the Outstanding Educator by the PTA.
Hi. Thank you for letting us present our awards at the front of you tonight. My name is Melissa Lamb, and I am the current PTA County Council President. Outstanding Educator Award is given to a special recognition to one teacher, counselor, librarian, nurse, administrator, or other educator that works in each of our school buildings. This winner can be recognized by showing development and inspiration to students academically and personally, support the students' activities, impact the parents and children, involvement in parents and community members in school life, innovative instructional techniques, and classroom management strategies. And then we put a board together and at each level, and they vote. This year, we had 235-ish nominations pour in. The middle school actually sent it out to all their students, and a lot of their students might have been one or two words, but they nominated their favorite student, their favorite teacher, or staff member in their school. So I'm gonna ask that each PTA president come up and recognize their school winner and present them with a rose that symbolizes, it's a peach rose, so it symbolizes gratitude and appreciation, and a golden apple that weighs a ton with their name on it. So the first step is pretty.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shay Scogs. I'm the PTA President for the preschool. I'm so honored to be here today to award our preschool twos' classroom teacher, Sarah Beechy, with the Outstanding Educator Award. Ms. Sarah was nominated by one of her students' family, so please listen to what they had to say. They said, "Ms. Beechy is a ray of sunshine who makes my boy beyond excited to go to preschool every day. Seriously, if he could, he would go every day to see her. He loves it so much that as soon as we get in the car for any errand, he yells, 'PRESCHOOL!' And he gets very upset if we go near the school and don't turn in. I cannot begin to put into words how it feels as a parent, knowing that your child is in a loving environment where he's understood, and to top it off, is making great progress with communication and other goals. My son went into the school year labeled as nonverbal, which I believe he's no longer considered. He's quite simply thriving under the instruction of Mrs. Beechy, and we couldn't be any happier." That quote beautifully captures just how much of an impact Ms. Sarah has on the twos at the preschool. So let's congratulate Ms. Sarah Beechy together on her dedication, inspiration, and kindness that she brings to school each and every day. We're lucky to have you. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Baris, and I'm the PTA President for King George Elementary, and I would like to recognize Ms. Arabeth Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez had numerous nominations, but I'm only gonna read about one of them, as they are so long. Ms. Rodriguez has been so kind and great to work with. She has seen my struggles and my frustrations and validated my feelings and concerns with my son every step of the way when appropriate. She has confirmed things that I thought I was crazy for thinking. She has been great for my son, helping him improve leaps and bounds. She is always willing to provide materials at home for us to work on and answer any questions I may have. She is the sweetest human being, and I know my son enjoys working with her. He used to get so frustrated and beat down about not being able to be understood, but now he no longer gives up or gets gets mad, but keeps trying, and I know that is thanks to her. We are so grateful for her. Ms. Rodriguez deserves recognition for going above and beyond and tackling different situations this year. She is a board member acting as a secretary, attends all PTA meetings, and helps tremendously with the first movie night and all the PTA events, and leaves the teachers' lunches at King George Elementary. She truly cares about kids and their learning success, but also their happiness and well-being while learning. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Saunders. I'm one of our Assistant Principals at Potomac. Ms. Donaldson couldn't be here tonight. She's one of our, she is our PTA President. And so Mrs. Morrison had a lot of recognitions, but I'm gonna read two tonight. She goes above and beyond for her students. She spends hours outside of school day prepping and planning fun and interactive lessons. Her top priority is meeting the students' needs. We are all lucky to work with her and learn from her. She is quiet and never seeks recognition for what she does, for the school and for our 4th grade team specifically. Our students emotionally and educationally thrive with her direction, and we have an absolute treasure with Melissa teaching 4th grade. And her next recognition says, "Mrs. Morrison fosters a love for learning by creating an engaging, inclusive, and motivating classroom environment. She encourages curiosity, creative thinking, resilience, helping her students reach their full academic potential, while also supporting their personal growth, confidence, and character development. Beyond academics, Mrs. Morrison is a dedicated teacher who actively participates as a team lead and department chair for our school. She supports her students in their outside activities. She's a strong teacher who establishes meaningful relationships with both students and their families. She provides guidance, encouragement, and support, ensuring her students feel valued and understood. Her influence extends beyond the classroom, shaping students' attitudes, confidence, and lifelong success. Mrs. Morrison bridges the gap between school and home by engaging parents and community members in educational initiatives. She communicates effectively and fosters partnerships to create a collaborative and supportive learning environment. She's an exceptional teacher who embraces creative teaching methods, hands-on learning, and differentiated instruction to meet diverse student needs. She also implements effective classroom management strategies that promote respect, responsibility, and a positive learning atmosphere. I am very grateful for Ms. Morrison. She has a very quiet presence, but sometimes the quietest people are the most profound, and so I am very, very grateful for her."
All right. I'm doing this on behalf of Miriam Nimi. She couldn't be here tonight, but I'm the secretary at Sealston, so it works out just fine. Ms. Laven is amazing, such a great leader for the kids. She recognizes each kid's strengths, weaknesses, and works with them. She really cares about your child, which is such a relief for parents. Mrs. Laven made it so that students truly look forward to going to her class every single day. Ms. Laven made school fun. She's an excellent communicator and takes the initiative to reach out with a quick email every two to three weeks just to let parents know how their students were doing in her class. She'd share what things students were doing well or what things made them smile, and this feedback was wonderful to receive. Mrs. Laven truly goes above and beyond, and that's why she is very deserving for this award.
Hi, my name is Melissa Diorda. I'm the PTA President at King George Middle School. And as Melissa said, we did have some students that gave in some nominations. So Ms. Anna Elizabeth Tanner is very stigma. And then I will read, read a not-so-middle-school response. "There are teachers who educate, and there are teachers who inspire. This teacher is undoubtedly the latter. She is one of the most hardworking, dedicated, and underappreciated educators I know. Every day, she pours her heart into her students, ensuring their success not only just academically but personally. Whether before, during, or long after-school hours, Ms. Tanner remains steadfast in her commitment to her students, creating an environment where learning is not just about gaining knowledge, but also about developing confidence, curiosity, and a love for discovery. Her dedication extends far beyond the classroom. She has been instrumental in the revival of the middle school theater department, providing students with an invaluable creative outlet and an opportunity to shine. Whether she's organizing rehearsals, supporting young performers, or celebrating their achievements, her unwavering encouragement fosters a sense of confidence and belonging in every student she touches. Her commitment to school spirit doesn't stop there. She even takes on the role of DJ at school dances, ensuring that students not only excel in their studies, but also have a place to celebrate, connect, and create lasting memories. In a profession where challenges are never present, she faces every obstacle with resilience and grace. She walks into her classroom each day with a smile, uplifting everyone around her, students, colleagues, and even parents. Her positivity is infectious, and her passion for teaching is evident in the way she engages students in learning, making even the most complex topics accessible and exciting. Her impact extends beyond her students. She actively involves parents in the community and school life, fostering strong relationships that enforce the importance of education, both in and out of the classroom. Her innovative instructional techniques keep students engaged, while her creative classroom management strategies ensure a supportive and inclusive learning environment for all. In every way possible, she exemplifies what it means to be an extraordinary educator. She is not just a teacher, she is a mentor, a role model, and a source of unwavering support for her students. For all these reasons and more, she is truly deserving of the title Teacher of the Year."
You're magical. You're magical. Hi, I'm Gina DeCarly Coats, and I'm here representing the King George High School. And our representative and nominee is Amber Waldy. Amber Waldy is a consummate professional in teaching. She encourages her students to always be respectful, that they can achieve anything if they're willing to put in the work. She is a huge Buffalo Bills fan and attends most of the students' football games and volunteers to help when needed. She drove the golf cart for the homecoming nominee during halftime at the homecoming football game. She also attended the JRTC ball last year to support her students. Her impact is felt far and wide just by students, but also as parents, especially when she was doing 504s for parents' children. Amber likes to make learning fun, engaging by using technology and imagination when she unites, unites with students she teaches. She teaches Macbeth and Beowulf. When teaching Beowulf, the students make their own cardboard or wooden swords and have lots of fun doing so. She also teaches Homebound. She always brings solutions and ideas to making things fun, easier, and constructive to the workplace. She loves her job, even when challenging at times. She goes above and beyond. And as a parent of a student at King George High School, I can tell you from the other students, I hear about Ms. Waldy all the time and how she touches them through her public speaking classes as well. So congratulations, Amber Waldy.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody. Thank you so much for presenting this Schellenberger. We appreciate that. I'm sorry, Ms. Lamb. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have one more.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So last year, we started it, and this year, we're continuing with that on somebody who is special on our team, who's been a dedicated PTA person, who deserves a lifetime membership award. And so this year's winner is Terry Rinko.
So Becky Pryser actually nominated Ms. Rinko, and here's her words, and I hope I don't fumble them. "King George County Council of PTAs is honored to present the PTA Honorary Life Membership Award to Terry Rinko for her dedication and her service to King George PTAs and to the students, staff, and families of King George County schools. Ms. Rinko has served as president and other offices of many PTA boards in King George County during King George County Council, King George Elementary School, and King George Middle School. Ms. Rinko has been a tireless advocate and providing services and programs for students and staff for over 20 years. Her eternal optimism and genuine care for others has built many bridges between the community, the schools, the students, staff, and staff that stand strong today. She has aided and programmed, problem solved, when programs needed support, and has watched many programs, such as her Chartered Safety Patrol program, thrive. We are privileged to call Terry Rinko a friend and are honored to serve with her throughout life." And they give you a pen.
Thank you.
Take another.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rinko. And thank you again, Mrs. Lamb, for all your hard work and doing. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We do not? Okay. Do we have, Dr. Boyd, do you have superintendent comment, since we had no public comment?
So I will say this. It's come up a few times about the teacher bonuses. So I do want to let everybody know that the governor did pass the budget, and it looks like teacher bonuses have remained in the budget. So we're gonna work through that council as soon as we receive it, and we'll have some information that we can deliver to the board, and we'll make some decisions on what that looks like as soon as we have some further information. So I'll stop there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay, then. We have a presentation this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair. So this evening, we will have principal reports on May activities, and I think we've got a order of operations, and first up is Ms. Eli from Sealston Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight? So we were asked to kind of give you an update on all the things we're doing in the next three weeks, because we only have 13 days of school, because tomorrow is end day. Today was M. The ABC Countdown is full underway. This week, we are actually doing several things. We have Teacher Appreciation Week, as many of you know, so we're celebrating all of our staff. We also begin our SOL testing tomorrow. We have testing on Tuesday, Thursday, and Monday of next week. One of my most exciting days this year is Market Day in 1st grade. That's gonna be May 15th. So Market Day, our 1st graders create a mini economy within their classroom. Each of them creates a product with their families at home, brings in some things. The goal is it is homemade, it is created by the students. And then the classes come around, kindergarten comes up and buys things from them. We have pretend money. They get to trade in money. They get to set a dollar value amount for their product. And then the other classrooms come around and get to share as well. It is a very big deal. I have many things on my walls that are from Market Day. I have some pictures that are laminated. I have some bookmarks. So some really cute things that the kids do. It's a really exciting day. That week, we also have Senior Walk on May 14th, where we get to bring our seniors back to Sealston. We walk around the bus loop several times. It's a really exciting day. Hopefully, the weather holds out. Field Day is May 16th. The last week of school, our 5th graders go to the Sealston Sports Complex for the day and have a picnic and get to celebrate and really have a good time and just get to enjoy themselves and their peers for all of their hard work over the past years at Sealston. Kindergarten Celebration is the 22nd, and our final day of school, we have our 5th grade graduation along with our dare graduation at 9:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot.
Yes. All right. Next up, we have King George Elementary School.
Did you pull my stuff from there?
I did. We're one school.
All right. Well, we have a lot of the same activities going on at King George Elementary, but Ms. Hurst is passing out a flyer for you to let you know of the upcoming events. We still have lots of learning to do. We have our last big set of SOLs tomorrow for Virginia Studies and the Science SOLs. We are also celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week this week, which is Nacho Average Teacher themed. You'll notice that we have a picnic for every grade level, so they can have some time with their school family before we end the year. We also have Senior Walk. We, you wanna talk about preschool?
Yes, very little, a little field day for free day outside the back in the 15th. It is nothing like King George Elementary does, but I'm pretty sure they have a lot going on out there. We're just gonna be in one little corner, just taking some turns, very little people preschool.
And then on May 16th, we have our large Field Day happening. May 19th, you know, our last family, huge family event, is Grandparents' Day. They'll start off with a presentation, and then they do lunch with their students. And then we have our 5th grade celebration coming up.
The preschool is doing a moving kindergarten circle time ceremony. So again, nice to meet you in the classroom. They don't like a whole lot of stimulation, so we're just doing a little quieter.
And then on the last day of school, we have our kindergarten celebration, and 5th grade has their final picnic. So. Thank you. Stand by.
King George Elementary today doing our preschool transition meeting. Ms. Hurst was like, "Oh, Christie made a flyer." I was like, "Tell the guys to have a flyer too. Sandy didn't know. It's not her fault." But we also are having Teacher Appreciation Week this week. There's two events I left off, so I'll get to them. A lot of our things are at the same time on the same day. We also have our Senior Walk at 9:00 AM on the 14th. We also have Field Day on May 16th. It's pretty much a whole-day thing. May 12th, the 5th grade band has a concert at 6:00 at the middle school, I believe. And the 20th, we have our PBIS end-of-the-year raffle. So all of our kids work for Hawk Points. They can earn points throughout the year to then buy stuff. My big thing is how do we pay the kids to be there, right? I love you all, but I wouldn't go to work if I didn't get paid, right? So we always want to be able to pay our kids to come and do their best, and so this is their time to cash in those extra points.
And so this is their time to cash in those extra points. They can win gift cards. We've given away bikes in the past and some bigger items. Mr. Pacelli really does a great job of kind of organizing all of that. And then on May 21st, we have our BMX Big Air Assembly that we're having. They're going to come and I think it's a Go Green Assembly, like talking about the environment and things like of that nature. And then we also have our kindergarten promotion at 9:00 AM on the 22nd and then our fifth grade at 11:00 AM.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As everyone has said, we have a lot going on this time of year at the middle school. Like everyone else, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. Our PTA has been phenomenal. They're feeding us and giving us raffle items at our staff meeting today. So that's always fun. May 8th, which is this Thursday, we have our Spring Chorus Concert at 6:00 PM. They do a great job and I encourage you all to come check that out. Ms. Saunders just said that on May 12th, the elementary band concert is occurring at King George Middle School and that's also start time of 6:00 PM. Ms. Connor does a great job with the elementary band students and I know that will have a good turnout. The next day, May 13th, we have our Spring Guitar and Band Concert at 6:00 PM. It's fun to see the students who have never played guitar get up and perform together. And the band concert is always something to look forward to as well. Monday, May 19th, for our eighth grade students, we have Quarterly Awards. So we're going to do their final awards day for the year during third period. That's kind of just for students and staff that day. But then the next morning, on May 20th, we're doing our eighth grade celebration. Doors open at 8:30. Celebration starts at 9:00. We recognize students for their academic performance. We do our principal award. We have our band play. It's always a really nice time and I'd really encourage you all to come if you're able. And finally, the last day of school, we do our sixth and seventh grade awards day. I think we're going to do that in the afternoon this year, start time approximately 12:30 or 1:00. And then we're doing our end of year staff meeting at 2:45 that day where we do years of service recognition, say goodbye to those folks who are leaving. So that's always a good time too. And again, you're more than welcome to come join us for that. I have an agenda. I'll pass out for you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Good evening, everyone. I will follow up my information with an email, so you guys have this. So don't feel like you need to write it down. I did not make a colorful flyer. But we are extremely busy, as everyone is this time of year. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week last week because our testing is so extensive and oftentimes our teachers don't get partake in meals and things of that nature. So we did participate in Teacher Appreciation Week last week. However, our PTSA was there today to kind of finish that week off with a sixth day. So we want to just thank our PTSA for that. We had a great week last week with a lot of goodies and meals and things of that nature and a lot of, you know, a lot of love and appreciation towards our teachers, which they certainly deserve. Additionally, we had an honor roll recognition assembly where our students that had made honor roll, all three quarters were recognized by our guidance counselors, which I thought was a very nice thing. Wednesday night, we're kind of kicking off our busy season, if you will. We have our annual art show on Wednesday, May 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Does start rather early. The school's already kind of, if you walk through the main doors, you'll see the tables have kind of been set up. Kids are hanging things up and it's kind of been a production just to get the show ready to go. But amazing talent there with our students that are artists in the building. Amazing work that our teachers do with them. After that, at 6:00 PM is our Spring Chorus Concert. So certainly if you're around and you'd like to come and hear the students perform, we encourage you to do that. And our performing arts and our visual arts programs are just very, very strong. If you were with us last week at all from Wednesday to Saturday, hopefully you were able to attend the musical, which again was a one another wonderful production by Ms. Wine. So again, it's just the talent that is present at King George High School. Student wise, teacher wise, is just amazing. So again, we want to just, you know, congratulate our theater program for another great performance. On Thursday, May 8th, at 7:00 PM is our Spring Band Concert in the auditorium. This coming Friday night at 9, I'm sorry, May 9th is coming Friday night at 6:00 PM is our senior scholarship night. And as I reminded our seniors last week, you know, last year our seniors were awarded upwards of $5.5 million worth of scholarships for post-secondary school. So we're going to kind of see how this class stacks up. Opitition is always a good thing. So we're going to, we're going to celebrate Friday night for the amazing senior class that we certainly know that we have and we will wish them well and many other events that are coming up. May 12th, we have our CGS Senior Recognition Ceremony at 6:00 PM. May 13th, we have our NHS Induction Ceremony at 6:00 PM. We also have a, someone, the second part of a new tradition. On the first day of school, we have a senior sunrise. On the last day of school, we have a senior sunset. So we have a 6:00 to 9:00 PM event for our seniors on May 13th, their last day of school to celebrate that, kind of that, you know, that symbolic idea that the sun is setting on your senior year. So they have a great celebration that night as well. May 14th, we're still, you know, ripping and running. We have school walks at the elementary schools at 9:00 AM, which is a great event for our young students to see our seniors graduating and walking through the hallways in their caps and gowns, which is always a wonderful thing to see. The school, and I have to say, the elementary schools do this amazing job of just celebrating. It's like a, it's like a football game. People are cheering. Soccer game, people are just, it's just really, 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 really nice to see the young kids really support the older kids and their old kids really, really, really enjoy that. After those, after those school walks, we have, we also do a school walk at the high school so our students can celebrate our seniors. And then we have our senior picnic that day. Also on May 14th, we have our DECA Awards Reception at 5:30 PM in the library. And then finally, the big day is obviously, I think everybody here knows this by this time, but Thursday, May 15th, 7:00 PM, Fred Nat Stadium is our graduation ceremony. We are certain looking to that. I'm looking forward to that. And then in the event that it's like it is outside right now, if we have to use the rain date, that will be Sunday at 2:00 PM. So right now, the weather looks amazing next week and let's just hope and pray it remains that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we can hear from our student representatives who would like, who wishes to be first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Savannah Nelson, the student representative for the high school. So as the end of the school year comes to a close, students are getting super excited. I know I definitely am. So let's start off with sports. Our sports teams have done an exceptionally great job this year. A lot of those teams have gone on to great competitions such as our track and field team this year. They've had multiple accomplishments over the past few months and some of which are Kylie Carpenter for the Discus. She had a PR of 112 feet. And Lawrence Reynolds is state qualified at the Dogwood Classic. And there are many more student athletes that have done an amazing job this season. Our tennis team also just had their senior night as well. And our boys soccer senior night will be May 13th. So if you guys have the time, go out and show support for these amazing student athletes. As far as NJRTC goes, they have their end of the year awards ceremony this Saturday. This is a great event for the cadets to be recognized internally in the program and externally for all their hard work that they've put in. They've also just done a color guard for National Prayer Day and a color guard for Family Day, which was held at Sealston. They are also planning their West Virginia trip, which will be in August, which is a great opportunity for all the cadets to be able to demonstrate leadership and camaraderie and get to know one another better for the upcoming year. As far as the CTE department goes, DECA just went to Kings Dominion and they also had a Florida trip down there. That way, all their students who have qualified can showcase all the hard work that they've put in over the past year. Wednesday, as Mr. Watson said, is our art show for our wonderful artists that are in our school. So make sure that you come by and you show them the appreciation that they deserve. Their work is truly amazing. It's lining the hallways and it's great to see that. Thursday is our band concert. Make sure you come support them as well. And Theater had just wrapped up their wonderful musical on how to succeed in business without really trying. I really enjoyed watching this musical and I hope that some of you guys got the opportunity to go and see that as well. It was truly wonderful. Ms. Wine and the Theater Department always does such a great job putting on those productions. As far as, a week ago, we just had prom. Prom was a huge success. All the students had a lot of fun. I've heard nothing but great things. I really enjoyed it. And I'm sure that all the students will be excited for that again next year. Testing is coming up. It is in full motion right now with SOLs, AP exams, and students are trying really hard to get those grades that they deserve and that they put the work in for. So that's in full swing. And as far as the end of the year goes, senior grades are due on Friday. Senior awards are also on Friday. As Mr. Watson said, this is where students that have been awarded scholarships will receive that or be recognized. And the senior last day is the 13th. Graduation is the 15th. And Senior Walk and Picnic will be the 14th as well. And NHS Induction is the 13th, which is all of the underclassmen who have been selected to be a part of NHS, sign that book and they get inducted, which is a great night for them. And Senior Sunset will be the 13th. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
I'm Eric Silver. I am the middle school representative to the school board. So yeah, the end of the school year is here. I know all of my eighth grade friends are ready to leave. Middle school was great, but three years was enough. The eighth grade dance was held two weeks ago on Friday, April 25th. It was a huge success. We had several hundred students attend and helped to get some of the pre-SOL jitters out before our big, huge testing slog that is in full motion now. Speaking of SOLs, we are eagerly awaiting scores for some of them. The writing, English, and science SOLs are done. Math and social studies are upcoming. Fingers crossed. The chorus, as Dr. Nice mentioned earlier, the chorus is holding their concert on Thursday. It's great. They've worked so hard, the entirety of the second semester, to prepare for this spring concert. I am in the choir. I can confirm. It has been interesting, to say the least. And the band concert will be, band will be holding their concert next week on Tuesday. And they have also been working really hard. I have a lot of friends in band. They said that this, the second half of the semester, this semester has been really, really hard for them, but like, but in a good way. They've been working really hard. They've been balancing their concerts and their testing and it's overall been really great. Sports, track and field just held their Athletic Conference Championship Games thing at Battlefield Middle School last Saturday. I heard there were some transportation issues with the bus getting there really early and then leaving when no one was there. But we got through it and they went on to perform really, really well. Baseball and softball have their athletic conference this Friday, also at Battlefield Middle School. And fingers crossed, we don't have any of the transportation delays and I am confident that they will do very, very well. Another thing that Dr. Nice mentioned is of course that the eighth grade graduation is on Tuesday, May 20th. Cannot wait. Ready for summer. I'm sure all of my eighth grade friends are too. And it'll be really great for them to celebrate all the hard work they have put in, not just over the past year, but over the past three years. Finally, I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Nice, Dr. Boyd, and all the members of the school board for offering me this absolutely tremendous experience of serving on the school board as a student rep. It was wonderful. It was a great honor. And I would just really say thank you to all of you for making that happen. Thank you.
We would like to say thank you to both of you as well. We've really enjoyed your input and your ability to speak in front of everybody and you've just done a great job. We really appreciate it. If anybody else would like to say anything, we just want you to know that we are grateful for you and hope you do well in your next adventure.
I'd like to say something. Since you won't be here at the end when we do the board comments, I just want to say that it's been a real pleasure listening to both of you throughout the years you've been here. You, you present a real level, almost a professionalism that as a student, it's very clear that you have been taught very well, obviously, starting at home, but then also with the teachers and administrators and so on. You have conducted yourselves, both of you, in a very exemplary and prideful manner. Thank you.
Same. I just want to piggyback off Mr. Bush. Watching you both grow, even though some of you came speaking professionally, probably born that way, but from the hospital. But yes, thank you for showing up and just being professional and even dressing that. I mean, these are small things, but they go far and they mean a lot. It says a lot too. So thank you for the year with us.
Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
I move that Pursuit to Code, State Code Section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia, the Board convenes in closed meeting to review hires, substitutes, and resignations as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. That'd have been perfect.
I have a motion to return to open meeting, please. I move that King George, King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by a public body.
Certify.
Certify. Certify. Certify. All those in favor?
Aye.
You have to have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had to approve.
I make a motion that we approve all of the personnel and positions presented.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we can go over our consent agenda meetings quickly. Does anybody have any comments? Thank you, by the way, Ms. Yell, for giving us up to date on these. We're not having to review 10 at a time anymore. Shape that. Does anybody have any questions or changes to these?
Madam Chair, I do. On page five, there was a comment from me that I did not make. I'm not sure who made that, but it wasn't me.
Which one? Regular meeting?
Regular meeting, yes.
Playing with rainbow toys.
It probably didn't say that. Actually, William, you want to? This is when the.
Playing with the rainbow toys.
I think they may have been working with their word thing.
Oh, right. Right, right.
I think it's kind of cute.
Well, the person right before said it.
Yeah, it's the, it's the repeat of the one just before, so that's probably the only issue.
Anything else? Someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes with that minor change?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2025, with the exception of.
amended.
As amended.
And how about the disciplinary hearing minutes?
I make a motion also to approve the disciplinary hearing minutes as presented.
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, we have Ms. Haff.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can go ahead and run with this. Ms. Haff is here if you have any questions. This is a purchase requisition to exceed.
This is a purchase requisition to exceed $50,000, so we bring it to the board this evening. This is our annual Chromebook refresh. So it is my recommendation to approve a motion to issue two purchase orders that total 260, 260,850 dollars for 750 student devices and to file for reimbursement through the VP SARP by June 30th of 2025. This is the annual renewal of our Chromebook purchase.
We had discussed this already in the budget and everything, right?
This is all, yeah, this is all covered.
I make a motion to approve. What is this called? Uh, the purchase of the student Chromebooks for 260,850 dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next.
Yes, Madam Chair, so I'm happy to present to you. We have talked extensively throughout this year about the purchase of our math curriculum for elementary and middle and high. This, again, was incorporation with our Board of Supervisors, who allowed us to have this fund balance to purchase our math curriculum. It is my recommendation this evening to approve the math curriculum as presented in the cost of 887,745 dollars and 50 cents. And we have our instructional staff here, too. If there's any questions, you can see that the purchase order is below.
I move that we approve the math curriculum as presented for a total amount of 887,745 dollars and 50 cents.
Sorry. Question?
All in favor?
Discussion.
Question after that, though. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay.
We were supposed to have discussions, though. No, you can have any discussion now. You just say any discussion. All right.
Sorry. It's just some, I'm sorry, did you discuss this last time? Was that?
No.
Okay, just, you know, a couple of questions. This is, this was recommended by, I assume, our math department. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And are a lot of other divisions using this in, in Virginia, I assume? With success? Yeah. And it looks fine. I just, this is one I don't know.
So, yes, I'm Karen DeCleat, the Division Elementary Math Specialist.
And I'm Lizzie Campus. I'm the secondary math specialist.
So what we've done is we've gone through an extensive process, beginning with approved curriculum from VDOE. The Department of Ed goes through a very rigorous process of vetting curricula before they recommend it. And they're looking for a correlation between the content put forth in the curriculum and the Virginia Standards of Learning. So Envisions is actually a curriculum that was approved in the previous cycle in 2016 and has been updated for the 2023 math standards. So there's not a long history of the newer curriculum, but it has been thoroughly vetted. Additionally, for our K-5 teachers, we've had three different instances where we have met, and teachers have been allowed to preview this, among other curricular choices. And this was the one that the K-5 teams had as their top choice, the majority of those teams.
And we follow a similar process at the secondary level. In terms of what other divisions are using, we don't have hard numbers, but in talking with other leaders around the state, we do know we're actually on the early end of adoption. Some divisions are just starting their process, so.
What kind of, I'm sorry.
I just said, "Good job."
What kind of support will they be giving after, once this is adopted?
Yes, so what we envision as the support process for this would be a getting-to-know-your-curriculum professional learning session prior to teaching the curriculum. And then, of course, at the elementary level, we do have dedicated focus times at the beginning of each school day. And so what we play, our plan is with the elementary math lead teachers, one of which is in each building, we will keep in touch with the teachers, get their feedback, get an understanding of what they feel they need, and then embed additional support into that focus time as well as two additional virtual sessions with the publisher later in the year on Teacher Work Day.
Is there training that's required before this is implemented?
We have a, during Teacher Work Week, there will be an in-person PD sessions where the tech companies provide trainers, and they come and walk through all of it with them.
Excellent. Excellent, okay.
Yes, and our kind of to date for that is August 6th.
Good.
And I noticed there's more training available, though, for first-year teachers.
Yeah. Yes, yes. And additionally, Savis, which is the publisher of Envisions, also provides support within their online platform in the form of videos and tutorials for the teachers. So we have many layers of support. But yes, we agree that teachers do need to be supported in the rollout of any new curriculum, and that support needs to meet them where they are. And, and knowing that teachers will all need different things, feel like personalizing that to happen during their focus time meetings, not all of them, but just some of them, would be a way to maximize their learning without wasting their time.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have just a couple more questions. And again, because I, you know, having been in administration, having, I was actually worked with a publishing company for a while. But I guess the, the support that they're giving, no, let me change the question. When the teachers looked at this and vetted it, what was, what set this apart from the other curriculums that they looked at?
Well, we did solicit a lot of feedback, so it's different depending on the team. For some of our K-2 teachers, they felt like it was more user-friendly because it is, it uses a similar style platform to the curriculum they're currently using. They felt that it was more engaging for their students than our current curriculum. And they liked that there were a lot of supports within the system that they could use with their different technology boards that some of the teachers have in their rooms. And it also includes some very engaging virtual math manipulatives that typically would be a paid subscription service, but it is included in the curriculum. For our grade three to five teachers, a lot of the feedback was that they felt like it was well-aligned to the standards of learning.
Okay.
And it did give them a lot of resources that they could use that provide SOL question-type practice. And so the, the teams that preferred this program preferred it for that reason.
Last question. I just know that dealing with curriculums before, especially math curriculum in the state of Texas many years ago, the, the publisher actually wrote, rewrote the curriculum for, to match the, what we call SOLs in Virginia, to match the Texas one. Is this one that was specifically written for Virginia because of the SOLs?
So it is a, they do have several versions of this curriculum, and there will be some Virginia-specific resources within the platform. So the books themselves will not be rewritten and republished, but all of the content needed for our teachers will be there. And additionally, we do have at the elementary level summer work happening. And so we have teachers that have volunteered to do this quette in the month of June to rewrite our pacing so that they feel like they have a good understanding of how they're going to use this resource throughout the next school year. So, you know, we have a lot of really dedicated people that are committed to utilizing this to its fullest potential.
That's good. Sounds like you all did a very good job of vetting this and looking at it, and hopefully we'll see some improvement with the math scores. That's the bottom line with a lot of this.
That is our hope, and I know that our teachers have expressed that they're very appreciative of having the opportunity to having an updated math curriculum because they have been working in a full implementation year for the 2023 Standards of Learning without the support of an updated curriculum. They've done an amazing job. They've worked hard to make sure that our students are getting what they need. But whenever we can take some of that work off of the backs of teachers, you know, we're really excited to do that.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I asked so many questions, but...
No, we love questions.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, and that has been properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, we have our discussion item about our agenda format.
Yes, Madam Chair, at the request of the board, I have updated our Form BDDC-F1. And the two revisions this evening are the verbiage that we read for public comment. I've updated that to be a little more concise. You can, we have redlined, striked the original version, and then below you'll see the new, the new verbiage there. I won't read it. Everybody can see that and read it. And then, secondly, the discussion is around taking our closed session, moving it from the middle of the meeting after student rep comment to the end of the meeting, and you can see where it's underlined down below in, in number 19. If I can stop there for any questions, Madam Chair.
Dr. Boyd, I believe the verbiage that you picked for the public comment was based upon what other localities are doing. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It looks good to me. Does anybody else have any issue with it? We'll have to vote on this, too.
I like it. Yeah, we have to vote on it. But yeah, I like, I think it's good. It's, you know, we had, we did not have an appropriate one before. We had the longer one, and the longer one was taken from some other divisions, but I like this. This makes it more concise. I think it's great.
Does anybody have any issue with moving the closed session back to the end?
Yeah, why did we, I mean, when we first moved it, there was some reason for it. What was the, I'm sorry, I missed the...
Well, the meetings were taking so long, and we had our students here, and we wanted to let...
Oh, I know that. Okay.
I believe that was the biggest.
Yeah, I think it provided a break, too, for folks to, to leave in the middle. We were also considering our HR director and doing, doing personnel earlier in the evening so that she could leave, but she always stays anyways, so we, we vetted this, these changes with our, the school board office staff as well, and they're completely on board.
It seems like this one is making them stay longer. That's okay.
No, this, this won't, this, so the closed session, Beth, she'll still, she still stays anyways.
You stay anyway, don't you? Yeah, that's fine.
And I think everybody else will still, you know, be able to leave at an earlier time.
Yeah, I like the idea that we make these types of changes to accommodate those who are attending. That's a great concept. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion?
I make, I make a motion that we approve BDDC-F1 with the changes presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, we have our committee reports. Mr. Frank, do you have any committee reports?
I have nothing, thank you.
Miss Cleveland?
Nothing.
Mrs. Davis?
Just that the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School has approved the new director as of yesterday, Sunday.
Cool.
Mr. Bush?
Well, I attended the ATI virtually, but they did not have enough physical presence to have a quorum, which is kind of sad. But anyway, so we're having that meeting again on the 14th of this month. And it's kind of a makeup meeting, and I suppose we'll have another one two weeks later after that. And then the CAC Committee is meeting this Wednesday, day after tomorrow. And I hopefully will be there for that, and they won't change it to a virtual and may not be able to connect. But we will have that, and so I'll have a report for both of those in our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I attended the Technical Advisory Committee la, I'm, Technology Advisory Committee last week, and it was our last one of the school year. And I'm still super, super excited that we have so many people that attend. And I think the biggest success, maybe not the biggest, but one huge success was our first testing day, May 1st. We hardly had anybody go down, so thanks to our upgrade last year. We had, I don't know how it's going this week, but last week was great. So, let's see, we also had a lot of discussion about AI, and Mrs. Richard has really taken the, the lead on helping us figure out a way forward because the students are unfortunately ahead of us on that. I do appreciate everybody's input and just, it's a really great group of people. Ms. Haff's enthusiasm is always top-notch, trying to do all the good things. And of course, we just bought 700, approved the purchase of 750 new Chromebooks, and the philosophy there is that those are going to go to the sixth and seventh graders, and since they're upgraded and beefier, hopefully they will carry our students all the way through to graduation. So it's ultimately a cost-saving measure, but also, you know, technology changes so quickly that we don't know for sure. Got a lot of summer work tasks in the making and a lot of, just a lot of good, a lot of good stuff going on in that committee. So I, again, I really appreciate the whole committee and Ms. Haff for leading it up and her amazing assistance that provides wonderful notes and minutes and everything, and that's all I've got.
With attendance? Again?
Yes, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had the great honor, on behalf of King George County Schools, of receiving the Community Impact Award from the Fredericksburg Regional Chamber of Commerce last Friday night. This was a great, great experience. I want to specifically and publicly thank Christine Hill. We had Terry Rinco and Kim Trusslow, who were all in attendance there that evening as well, and all of their efforts in making sure that we could be recognized in this way. This was not something expected, but something that was an amazing evening to see. We had multiple superintendents, multiple business owners from the Fredericksburg, from the Fredericksburg area, and, and to accept this honor on behalf of the efforts that we've been accomplishing in King George County Schools is quite amazing. So I just wanted to recognize them, thank you publicly, and, and say thank you. So, thank you, guys. We, let me give you a quick budget update because it is a fluid time. On Friday of last week, the governor came out and made his final budget recommendations and delivered a approved budget. We are still waiting for the CAL tool. So I would like to see the bottom line before we move forward and talk about what this means in terms of local funds and local money. However, in his speech, he did mention that he was including things in the budget that were questionable as to whether or not he was going to keep them in there. For example, the support cap, he has left that in the budget, meaning that those funds are in, in the budget moving forward. So there is no longer a support cap. The teacher bonuses are still in the budget. And additional funds were also in the budget for ESL and special education. So all of that money, it looks like the budget is going to be delivered in a very favorable position to localities. So when we get that CAL tool, I'll be able to talk more specifically about that, but it looks promising right now. Moving forward Monday, or excuse me, let me back up for a minute. Friday of this week, we should get some information from the federal government on the title programs. And we'll have a better idea, you know, with the consolidation of the Department of Education and where Title, Title I, Title II, Title III, all, all the title programs sit moving forward will be very telling. Right now, King George County Schools gets just over $2 million in terms of federal funds for the title programs. So that's certainly an important bit of information we should receive on Friday. With all that information, we will, we will push out contracts at the beginning of next week, and we will have a clause in the contract saying, you know, all of the contracts are dependent upon full budget approval. So the Board of Supervisors has their public hearing on Wednesday. That's not tomorrow night, but the next night. And then they're pushing to have a budget approved by the middle of the month, I believe. We will turn back around, assuming they have an approved budget at the, in the middle of the month, and we'll approve our final budget on our first meeting in June, which will be June 2nd, putting us in order to start our fiscal year July 1st, and we should be able to move forward from there with that. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Mr. Frank? Word comment?
As, as always, I want to thank the teachers and the staff for all you do. And I say that every, every meeting up here, but I really do appreciate everything that you guys do. Without you, there's no way that, that this division would run. I want to thank the people, the here today, from the presentations, from the PTA. Thank Stephen Wang for their, as the, for the invocation. And above all, I want to thank the Sealstone Elementary Course for their national anthem. It was fantastic. It was really great. Probably it was the highest. Probably it was the highlight of the meeting, uh, for, for us up here anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Miss Cleveland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too want to thank all the speakers and the presenters tonight. Uh, it was very entertaining. I really appreciate everyone coming out and giving us, you know, that great information and presentations. Um, I also want to thank my colleague, uh, Mr. Frank, for taking me with him to the high school. The last week, last week. I had the opportunity to visit, walk through, um, talk with some of the teachers, talk with some of the administration. Um, was just an amazing experience being able to talk with them and their environment, hearing their challenges, hearing things that are going well, um, and also talking to the students. Um, it was really cool. I'm actually surprised that, um, Mr. Frank didn't mention this because we had, we had the opportunity to actually go into a classroom and talk with the students. The teacher invited us in to come and talk with the students. They were able to ask us questions. Um, so it was, it was really, it was really great, so thank you for bringing me there. Um, I was also, uh, I also attended the Meet the Coach event, uh, that happened last week. I was able to meet Coach Wallace, the new high school football coach. Um, it was very informative. He went over his handbook, uh, with the team and some of the parents that were in attendance. Um, and I recommend that if you, you know, are interested in football or learning more about the new football coach, um, to grab one of those handbooks because it just talks about how he, you know, handles his business with his football team. I'm very excited to have him in King George, and I'm looking forward to a great season next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleveland. Mrs. Davis?
I just want to say congratulations to all our outstanding educators that were here tonight. And we know that there's many more out there that weren't able to be here because we can only pick one each, but... We're, they can only pick one each, but, um, I want to also say that, you know, me and Kathy have been meeting with, uh, Mrs. Hoover have been meeting with Dr. Boyd every Wednesday, and I'm just feeling like we're heading in a positive direction, growing as a team again, or a team. And it just feels positive, some of the changes, like I love that we get to hear from the principals. That was our first time doing this, them presenting to us like what they're doing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and so I'm excited about that. I think that's something we're going to be doing every school board meeting? Hopefully, talk about it, okay. I, I would hope so, it's, it was, it was good. Um, congrats to the new coach. Uh, I know that that was a hot seat and a lot of people wanted it, so congrats. Um, and Dr. Boyd, thank you for your hard work because, you know, all the things that have been happening. You went to Florida and you spoke, you were chosen as superintendent in Virginia, the only one, when you went to Florida. Right? What was that event, again?
Uh, gosh, you're on the spot now.
Sorry. I just want to, yeah, they give you a spotlight because that's, you're the leader.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
And, and you were chosen to do that, and then also handed this award. What day was that last?
That was Friday, was it Friday or Thursday?
Impact Award.
Thursday last week? Yeah, I know, it seems like a while ago.
But I mean, all the other school divisions around, you know, with a whole lot more money than we have, and we've invested, we have teachers that are so invested that we've got that award, so.
We have a great team, a lot of wonderful people doing wonderful things, and I'm just happy to be part of it.
Little old King George, that was awesome. So thank you, guys, who were involved in that. Um, and that's it. Oh, I did go with, um, Mr., my brain is, I'm going, Mr. Frank to the high school as well. And we kind of did similar, we got to speak to a lot of the staff and students, and that was a lot of, it's always fun. It's kind of cute, too, to hear them because you might know more of the story, but you're hearing their version, and it's just neat to hear, hear them open up to us, so, um... Hopefully, we'll get around and be able to go to more of the events that are coming up this May. May's a busy month. But this, today, I wanted to also thank Kathy, Mrs. Hoover. We provided coffee to Sealston for the teacher appreciation, but I was running so far behind because I'd double booked. She showed up to the cafe, she made the coffee, she made my chicken salad, she delivered the coffee. They needed cups, she went out and bought them cups. So just a shout out to her for providing that coffee. If it wasn't for her, it probably wouldn't have been able to happen, so thank you, Mrs. Hoover. Her first day retired, too, by the way.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank, um, Mrs. Lamb and the, um, the choir, the elementary choir. That was really, uh, precious to see, and them singing out, they, they weren't afraid to sing. You don't often see that with elementary children, so that was wonderful. And of course, Savannah and Eric, Savannah's last time here. It was, uh, again, we've already complimented what a good job both of our student reps did. I'm especially excited about Ms. Hill, Trusslow, and Rinco and the accomplishment that they've done. I saw Mr. Terry Rinco the other day as I was leaving the high school, and she was just giddy. She was so excited about, um, you know, being recognized in that way. That was really good. I've also been to the high school a couple of times this past week, and, uh, um, I was impressed, um, with several things, um, but it was very good just seeing, I guess, the students, um, seemed to be excited towards the end of the year, and yet they weren't rowdy, and it was, um, I don't know, it was, it was a pleasant environment. And I think it was nice to see that. Uh, I think that's, oh, yeah, and also congratulations to Ms. Hoover on, uh, her retirement. That's, uh, quite an accomplishment. And, uh, yeah, thank you. You're doing, you're doing a great job, too. Thank you, that's all.
Not officially retired till October first. I'm not that old. Thank you, everyone. Um, I just want to thank everybody that's already been thanked. Um, but, everybody that presented or came out in the nasty weather. Um, I do appreciate the principals coming with their, with their reports of the next month because there's a lot going on that now I can attend almost everything, and I'm going to. Um, and you know, Dr. Boyd, the, the thing that I wanted to thank you about was that you've done so much work with budget. I know it's a lot, every year, it's a lot, and you keep, you do keep us so informed, and we're, we're going to do great things because we're going to have plenty to do it with, I'm sure. Um, but since it is Staff Appreciation Week, I wanted to, I know we all say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," but like Mr. Frank said earlier, we really do appreciate all the staff and, um, wish we could do more, but we do as much as we can, and we just appreciate everyone. Thank you.
And Ms. Galf, it was, wait, I'm sorry, it was Board Secretary Clerk Appreciation Week. That week last week? Well, thank you, yeah, you were out of the, you were out of the country, celebrating.
I was celebrating myself.
You go. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.